I called this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is six P M. This meeting is being live streamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Before we get started, I'd like to thank members of the public for attending the school board business meeting and to observe the work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. We appreciate the time it took to be here this evening. I'm Dr. Hillman. We have some items in the table file.
Yes, we had several items in the table file, including the table file as the presentation narrative for the twenty-two, twenty-three general fund budget presentation. I did add a legislative update, or I suppose I should say a lack of a legislative update to my operations report. And we'll go through that. There are some additional items in the consent agenda, including appointments increased, decreased, change in assignment, a leave of absence, and two resignations. I've also provided an updated recommended motion for approval of the contract with Arcadia Charter School based on feedback from the Minnesota Department of Education's review, preliminary review of our draft contract.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Jeff. Second by Corey. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. The board has reserved up to thirty minutes of our meeting for public comments. This is an opportunity for community members to address the board. After being recognized by the chair, each individual will identify themselves and the group they represent, if any. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. You cannot cede your time to anyone else. This is not time to debate an issue, but for the board to hear your comments. The Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comments about specific student or staff matters in an open session, even without naming individuals. This includes the public comment portion of our meeting. The board respects and values your input, but when it relates to a specific student or staff member or to a specific incident, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. Corey will monitor your time and will indicate your time remaining at one minute, thirty seconds, and ten seconds. And we have one person signed up tonight, and so I'd like to call forward Rich Graves.
Hello. So sorry, I'm a little over addressed. I'm coming back from a funeral. So I wasn't planning to come here, but there was a really good joke at the funeral, so I wanted to share and also thank you guys for. I know you've had a hard couple months, especially the last couple meetings. So I want to compliment you on this ability that you've maintained in difficult circumstances for approaching the many, many speakers. I watch over Zoom the last couple meetings, the many, many speakers who were very concerned about budget cuts. I understand they're necessary. I understand they're painful. So the joke at the funeral today for our friend Dean, so I'm, I'm, I was, I was among the troubadour singers, whatever, which is why I have to get up, which is really fun, was there's two kinds of ships in the ocean. There are submarines and there are targets. So I just want to recognize that there are people around who see the Northfield Public Schools as a potential target. And I understand that you are not at fault for having to cut budgets. And thank you for pushing that with empathy, especially we had students very concerned at the loss of cherished staff, that they may not feel as safe without those staff, and you've done your best, and it's out of your hands. As, as Dr. Hillman said, we will, we have a lack of legislative update. Again, out of your hands. Thank you for your prior service trying to raise awareness of the need that the school district and all other schools have. Thank you for your efforts to maintain a budget reserve and stop eating into our seed corn. But now we have to. And yeah, when you, when you lose things, you lose things and you grieve and you move on. So I know that there are people who don't necessarily agree with all the public policy that we're pushing here, Plyler v. Doe nineteen-eighty-two, Brown v. Board nineteen-fifty-four, Andrew v. Douglas County, that was a special ed thing. Not everyone agrees with all these things. There are a lot of balance. You have a hard job of balancing a lot of difficult priorities in a potentially shrinking or at least not socially growing pie. Thanks for trying. And I will yield the rest of my time to nobody. Thanks.
Thank you, Rich, for those kind words. Now I want to move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, I just have a couple of them this evening, the first of which is from Greenville Park, but I'm going to extend it to the rest of the buildings as well. The first evening music concert at the quote-unquote new Greenville Park Building was held on May sixteenth. I think you just need to stop for a moment and let that sink in that you know, the building has been open for a year and three quarters, and they had their first live music concert there just last week. And so the Greenville Park Choir and Band performed for family and friends. It was a wonderful celebration of music in our new school. And so I, I think it's important. We also are seeing it's concert season, so there's all sorts of concerts happening. There's choir, there's band, there's orchestra. I know Bridgewater recently had some of their concerts. I know that there are others that are coming up orchestra is this Wednesday. Last week we had band and then at the high school and we had choir on Saturday night, and I want to take a moment just to acknowledge that on Saturday night, the Northfield High School choirs recognized and acknowledged the service of Ruth Legvold. And so Ruth is a beloved pianist who has accompanied the Northfield High School choirs for the last twenty-nine years. And she's a nineteen-sixty-one graduate of Northfield High School. And so there was, there was some really wonderful and meaningful video messages from the last five choir directors via video. And it was quite the celebration for Ruth. We are so appreciative of the thousands of students that she has impacted. Think about that over twenty-nine years, she's played for, you know, thousands of students and is universally loved by the students who she has played for. So it's rare that you have that kind of combination, an alumni and someone who had done that work for that long. And so we want to thank Ruth for that. And again, we're just so pleased. In fact, Kyle Leesman, the choir director pointed out something that was meaningful, that this was our first, what he called proper spring concert since two thousand and nineteen. And so it is great to have our auditoriums and our gymnasiums filled with music again, and we thank all of our music programs and their directors for their excellent service to bring the arts alive in our school district.
Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Does anyone have anything they want to add? We're now on to items for discussion and reports. We have several tonight. And the first is the Policy Committee Recommendations. And Dr. Hillman, do you want to talk about those first, or should we just take them in order? Okay, so let's start out with the Early Adventures Handbook. Anyone have any comments that they would like to bring forward on that?
Just talk about the handbooks. I think I will just frame that. The handbooks that we brought to you tonight have very minimal changes over last year. In fact, really, it was date changes essentially is pretty close to all that was changed. I believe that's correct, right, Anita? So these are just, just so people know, if you're looking through for major changes, these handbooks did not have any major change. It was very simple updates. I thought that was just a good frame for.
Thank you. Any comments on Early Ventures? Well, if you come up with something, we can always come back to it. The next handbook I'd like to ask about is the Elementary Handbook. Tom?
On page eight, at the very bottom, where it talks about safety, it says elementary and kindergarten through grade six are required. I think we meant all grade through five, since this is is an elementary book.
Could you tell me, tell me the page again?
Page eight, at the bottom.
Yes, we can make that change in this handbook. It is, that is a requirement through grade six, so I'm sure they just took the piece and added, but we, we can make that modification. Thank you for pointing out, Tom.
Other comments, questions? Then let's move on to the Co-Curricular Activities Handbook. Any comments or questions about that? Tom?
On page nine, under, about third of the way down, under Category One Activities, the one act play is still listed.
Yep, this, we will update that. Thank you.
And then while we're on that, I don't see that the chess is going to be letter eligible, or is that still under?
We are still working through that as we are, Aaron is starting to work through that process. And we are updating that because there, we have also come up, there's a couple of other activities, at least one other activity that would be similar in that way. And so looking at the lettering piece, not just for chess, but for the fishing team as well.
Okay, thanks.
And first reading, so nothing.
Other comments, questions? So if you come up with something, we can come back. The next one is for the Elementary Portage Handbook. Tom?
On page ten, I think I'm on the right one, where it talks about low-cost health insurance.
Yes.
In the elementary booklets, the, the details of it have gross income and the bullet points were all crossed out. Did you want to do that here too?
We're going to do that here too. Yes, we are. We are starting to work with our partners at Newger Communications to look at reimagining these handbooks. As you know, the, the handbooks are there are thirteen of them, and it can be a challenge to make sure that when we have similar things in all of the handbooks, to make sure that they're all updated appropriately. So we are working for next year to reimagine how we do these handbooks, and that's an example of something where we felt that we could link to that information and not necessarily need to include it in the handbook directly. So thank you for pointing out. We'll catch that and take care of it. Good job reading these things. Excellent. Well done.
Additional comments, questions? Then I guess we're on to the next section. All right, so next will be the revised two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two and proposed two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three Community Education Budget. And at the next meeting, we'll take action on this. Welcome Director Bay.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. You asked me if it's on.
You didn't press the button? Nope.
Good evening, members of the board. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm here to present the budget revisions for our current fiscal year and then the preliminary budget for F Y twenty-three. And as always, I want to start with some reminders about the principles of community education and highlight a few things as, as we go. For fiscal year two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, we offered two hundred and fifty-seven programs through community education. As you all know, COVID has created some significant challenges to our department and the Northfield community. The impact of COVID nineteen on our department's budget, as you will see, will have an ongoing impact from years to come. Throughout the pandemic, we have learned different ways to offer programming and will continue some of these new programming options in the future. And then, of course, I did share, as you know, one of our principles of community education is access to school facilities. And I did share about a month ago, just the report of the facilities. But as you know, we didn't fully rent or use, didn't have our facilities completely open to the entire public and non-local user groups for a chunk of time during the pandemic as well. Throughout the the last two years-ish, we have continued to settle into the remodeled Greenville Park and really made the Northfield Community Education Center our home. Due to COVID nineteen, some of our projects were delayed, primarily being the work in the former media center with the Minnesota Children's Museum. I'm happy to say that has started, building has started off-site for that. So that is we'll, we'll see a lot of changes over this summer. And also happy to report that this year, the food shelf, the onsite food shelf has fully opened with access to all of those who live on, in Northfield in general, but especially those who live on the north end of Northfield. So if you have not had a chance to see that, please stop in and I'd be happy to give you a tour. In COVID, we were especially grateful to be at the N C E C. It did allow for space, especially last year when we were more spread out, to be able to have the space to serve all the students who wanted to be in the building. And then, of course, I just want to highlight some of the community education program components, which you will see above. The Community Education Department has approximately six hundred employees, and this does not include those people or organizations that we contract with for programming. So these would be people that are actually on the district's payroll. And they are working anywhere from full-time to maybe a couple hours a week as a seasonal recreation employee. So the gamut of who is employed by community education is quite vast. And then, as we start talking about the budget, as a reminder for all of you, the community education budget is in the oh-four fund of the school district, and it's not part of the General Education Fund or the, the General Fund, oh-one fund, which Val will be talking with you about later this evening. And then, of course, this slide represents our early childhood programming. A couple of things just to highlight on this slide. The graph that you will see on the right is our screening at age, well, it's our early childhood screening data from the Minnesota Department of Education. We have made, one of the areas that we've made a considerable effort in the last few years is to screen children at age three. One, this allows us more time to intervene if a student is, has some needs or areas where they would benefit from services prior to entering kindergarten. On a financial side, the state also reimburses us more if we screen children at age three. So I just wanted to reflect the growth that we saw in this. The, the state's graph was through two thousand and twenty. I can tell you that that graph increased at screen at age three last year and is on track to increase this year as well. We will screen through June eighth this year. And then, of course, the Community Education Department has an advisory council that helps guide or guide the work of the department. That council meets ten times a year. Members are appointed for three-year terms. We have two student representatives. We also have a representative from the school board, and that's Julie Pritchard. And then we have a representative from the City of Northfield's Park and Recreation Advisory Council. This, the budget revisions and the proposed budget for next year was presented in, at the April meeting of the Community Education Advisory Council, and they are, who brought forth the recommendation for the school board. This is then the budget revisions for this current fiscal year. As you are probably familiar with from previous presentations, the, our overall bail, our overall budget is made up of four funds. And those would be the General Community Education Funds. That would be the, what, just kind of the general office operations for community education. It is youth and adult recreation, youth and adult enrichment, driver's education, early ventures, kid ventures, youth development. And I think I've remembered them all. I didn't write them down. That was a good test for me today. E C F E is, just concludes our early childhood family education program. School readiness includes bridges to kindergarten, which we have expanded these last two years to anyone in the district that is an incoming kindergarten student that might be interested, and we have been using American Rescue Plan funding for that. But that does include bridges to kindergarten, our pathway one and two scholarships, and hand-in-hand preschool. And then unreserved is primarily our early childhood screening budget. So while it appears as one ending fund balance, these funds actually cannot be mixed. So we do have to keep them as for separate funds. So as you will see, there is a pretty dramatic swing in between what was proposed in the budget last year and what you are seeing is revisions. I will say like many community education departments in the state, COVID nineteen has, has caused some general large swings for many of us as the impact has changed over the various years. So as you will see, the, one of the largest swings was in general community education. And there are primarily two reasons for this large swing. One, we did see an increase in recreation, enrichment, and driver's education from what I predicted. It was pretty difficult at this point last year to know what the pandemic was going to do. And it was pretty conservative in what I expected for those programs to kind of have as an output for the, for the rest of the year. They, I will say, people have been much more comfortable with programming that has been outside in large settings, gyms, cafeterias, things like that. So those programs have done really quite well and have, in, in some areas, have almost returned to pre-pandemic numbers. So that is one part of the, the increase from what I had originally proposed. The other is federal funds. So we have received a significant amount of federal funds in the area of childcare, and then is where we've applied them. So we have received pretty steadily for the last year, two different, they've come in two different grants. One is a financial hardship grant, and one is a childcare stabilization grant. So some of these funds are just meant to offset losses we've experienced in childcare settings. And others of the grants, seventy percent is paid as an, as a stipend to staff who work in those programs, and it's paid based on the number of hours they worked in that payroll. And then thirty percent of that grant is able to be kept by the organization, so the employer. So there is not only have these childcare grants benefited us as an organization, but they've also been key to increasing wages that staff who have worked in these settings throughout the pandemic have seen. So those are the primary, we have received just over three hundred thousand dollars in federal funds this last fiscal year. So that is a primary swing in those areas. So as you can see, the initial proposed ending fund balance was nineteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. The revised is four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. And our community education budget goal does mirror what the district's budget goal is, which is to have an overall fund balance that equals fourteen percent of our operating expenses. So as you had maybe have caught in the slide before, before we are, will end, predicting to end this, you're nearly at that budget goal. Here is just a history of the community education fund balance. As you will see in the next slide, the majority of our budget is dependent on participation fees. And, and as you have seen or heard from me say, our fund balance often mirrors what is happening in the economy. Many of you can remember what was happening in the economy in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, and as we've worked through this, this this would mirror what you have seen. So there are a few budget assumptions I made as we, as you start to see what the F Y twenty-three budget is. Those assumptions I made in revenues is that we would have a slight increase in revenue for fee-based programs over this current fiscal year. While federal funds, we have been told, will continue through June of two thousand and twenty-three, there are no federal funds reflected in the budget that you are about to see. We know things can change, and we obviously have learned that quite well in the last couple of, couple of years. So you, we have, we anticipate that we will likely still receive some federal funds. I do anticipate it'll be a reduction of what we've been seeing as they try to start kind of taking away what, or if you want to say weaning off, if they want to start weaning off childcare centers for the federal funds that they have received. So those would be, again, the financial hardship and the childcare stabilization funds. We do know we'll have the continuation of the pathway one and two early learning scholarship funding. And then, of course, we have several grant applications that are out there. In the expenditure areas, we've allotted for the appropriate increase in salaries, wages, and insurance. As you also know, the, everyone who, almost everyone who's in the community education budget is negotiating contracts right now. So we will, of course, do the cleanup of this in budget revisions next year. And then appropriately staff, having staff support for all children. As you know, the goal of the Northfield Community Education Center and the programs we have there is to have kids ready for kindergarten and to reduce the cost of the general, to the general fund budget by providing children with supports that they need prior to entering kindergarten. This does mean at times we have extra staff to support students with a higher level of need, with unique needs who might come into our setting, and we haven't fully had evaluation time to know what their needs are, but we need to apply, provide appropriate staffing to keep them and others safe and to be, have time to do those evaluations. And of course, that has some cost to it because we are at times over what DHS would say is the, the required ratio in order to meet those needs. And we will continue to do that to meet the goals of being ready for kindergarten and to support the, those students when they do enter K through twelve. And then, of course, we will continue the hand-in-hand preschool section, which is a full day, a five-day-a-week section. It might be easier to actually see this on the next slide. This is just reflecting where our revenue sources are coming from for this next fiscal year. And as you can see, the majority of our revenue comes from fees. Sixty-seven percent in fact comes from fees. The other local sources includes payment from the City of Northfield for recreation programming, different sponsorship opportunities that we have, advertising in our brochure. As I always put a plug in for why the census is important, the aid levying entitlements is based on per census numbers around students that we have in preschool, adults that we might have in the, in the county. And so this is where census is really important because those formulas are established by the Minnesota State Legislature, but they are based on populations that we have in this, in either the City of Northfield or the Northfield School District or the county. So then here is the proposed budget for next fiscal year. As, as I mentioned, you, and you will see again, there is a swing in the General Community Education Fund balance. Again, we are not we have not accounted for any federal funds to be included in that. And I will say childcare is one area that we have not seen a return to pre-pandemic numbers. To give an example, we, Kid Ventures for this summer, as of right now, it will average approximately a hundred students a day at, each day that, that for the entire summer. Pre-pandemic, we would have averaged a hundred and thirty-five students per day. So this is just an example of kind of why we have seen a return to normal, normal being pre-pandemic programming in recreation, enrichment, and driver's education. We have not yet seen that same return to normal in some of our childcare settings. With that said, we do still, we have students that have high needs in those programs, and we have students who have not, sometimes have not been in a setting prior, you know, if they, if they were born in the last two or two, three years, they might not have had an experience outside the home. And we, and also children who are in our Kid Ventures program too, we are just seeing kids who are coming in with some higher needs at this time. So there is an additional cost too with that, with supporting them. So that is what is reflected in kind of what you will see as a swing, kind of an increase in funds for this fiscal year and then a decrease in funds for next fiscal year. So overall, protecting an ending fund balance for F Y twenty-three at two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. Of course, there are some variables. Actual program enrollments, fee collection. I will say we made a software switch as a community education department this year. L E O, which is, is used by a number of community education departments in the state. This will allow this will improve our fee collection. It does allow for automatic withdrawal. It does allow in the childcare settings. It does for, allow for credit card payments. I think it's what people expect at this point in time. They expect that they can, you know, schedule their bill pays and plan their monthly and family budgets that way. So this, we are looking forward to what L E O will mean in the area of fee collection for us. Of course, federal funds available to programs, we don't have clarity yet on what that may look like for this next year and the COVID nineteen pandemic and program enrollment. And then lastly, I always want to reflect the Greenville Park Community School because that is federal funds. It actually can't be reflected in the community education budget. So just always want to give a space here so that it can be reflected, and you know where we are. We are completing our eighth year of the Greenville Park Community School. This, this, we are in our second of two twenty-first century grants. And we're finishing up year three of that grant. And so you could carry over the first couple of years, but by year three, you had to spend down to nothing. So you will see that we are, we, we have a larger balance heading in, into this. And so we are, we did not draw from the, from just the general fund this year or some of our other funds because we have to spend this down to zero, which we will make sure happens. The Fed, this grant runs, it doesn't follow the same fiscal year. So we have throughout the summer to spend these funds. And then you will see, as we're reflecting next year, the, this contribution that we had had from the general fund was out of compensatory funds for Greenville Park, which were part of the for Greenville Park, which were part of the budget reduction process. So we will be using the the money that we received through the twenty first century grant to fund that program next year. And as you may have heard a little bit about, we are set to expand community schools at Bridgewater and Spring Creek this fall. And this will be using American Rescue Plan funds that must be used, they are solely dedicated for out of school time programming. So this will be an exciting expansion at those two sites to mirror some of the great things that are happening at Greenville Park. And with that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Thanks, Director Bailey. Do we have any comments or questions, Corey?
Thanks for the report, Erin. One quick question and maybe one that requires a little more answers. Concerning the revised budget numbers, are those as of the April twenty sixth Advisory Council meeting?
Correct. Yes. So, yep. We've received a little more federal funds since, and so it is as of the April twenty sixth.
And then concerning the expansion of community school, how do you think that may impact engagement? Do you anticipate you'll lose families who were going to Greenville and they'll just fill in the other spots? Or I assume the hope is that just increases overall, correct?
That, that's of course the hope. Primarily, we've only served Greenville Park families at Greenville. I think the pan, this is one area in the pandemic that allowed us to serve because we did some virtual programming. We opened up a few programs and then so that was really what, when we started to see how much interest there was, both from Bridgewater and Spring Creek. We did start this last year, we've run a bus from the CAC over to Greenville and we're seeing significant interest there. Kids would like to be at their homeschool though too. And so we really want to provide those opportunities at their homeschool. So why I don't, I, we've had some of those students come to the, to Greenville. It, it's not an overwhelming number that it's not the vast majority of who participates at programming there.
Other comments, questions?
So I think that if you take a look at that graph that showed us going back to two thousand nine and really to emphasize how community education's budget does rise and fall with people's disposable income in the economy. And to have managed this budget in the pandemic is nothing short of exceptional. And so Erin has just done a fantastic job along with Val of monitoring the budget, making sure that we are taking advantage of all the federal funds that are available to us. This is a situation that could have been dire and yet we are nearly at the fund balance goal. I'm not going to call it a miracle because it was planful. And the, these two directors have done an excellent job making sure that we are able to keep community education competitive. And the services that are provided are essential to families. Think about the childcare, you think about all of those different pieces where we play a central role in the community in those in those areas. I just, we just have to take a moment and pause and thank these two outstanding financial managers for their work. So this is exceptional. Well done.
Thank you.
Well, I was going to say thank you to you as well. So thank you, because I know this has been a crazy time for all of the school district, but especially for your area. And I appreciate all the care you've taken into making it work and making the money work. And I know, I remember a year ago, you were in reporting it was a little, little more dire and this seems much more rosy. So thank you for that. I do have a question in general. The kids who end up in kindergarten at the, in the school district, what percentage you think of those have either been to preschool or ECFE or somehow interacted other than the screening program with the, with the community yet?
So this looks a little different, you mean, pre pandemic versus mid pandemic. So we were always in the ninety ish percent of kids who'd been somewhere. So that would be preschool, childcare, regular attendees of ECFE, library, YMCA programming. We did see that drop. I believe it was around sixty five percent last year. So we saw a significant, which would mirror what, what we would say is community education and almost every other childcare center and preschool. It's a, I would say average for us and the community, we saw about a thirty, thirty percent reduction in people that were in early childhood programming. So there is this little blip, we had been quite high before the pandemic. We saw obviously pretty significant. We haven't seen a return to entirely normal numbers. I will say we are for this year, and we essentially full in both hand in hand preschool and early ventures. And registration is open for both for next year and full morning preschools are essentially full. We can't take an infant or toddler till, I think, next March in early ventures. So we, we're certainly seeing a return, but we do, there is, there will, there is a two year group in here that we saw significant reduction in children having an experience prior to entering. I mean, there might be picking it up now, but there's going to be a group here that has a different, had a different pre K experience than what was a little more predictable pre pandemic. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I was also wondering about what connection you have to the portage program and kindergarten portage. Do you help with that bundling into that or what's the connection of that?
So last year we ran, much like we run Bridges to Kindergarten, we last summer ran a jumpstart to first grade program. So for the, those students who had last year done kindergarten all online, we did allow time for them to come. It was modeled exactly like Bridges to Kindergarten. So they spent, they had a week, they spent half day in the building with teachers that were going to be first grade teachers to learn routines, build that systems and model that. We ran that at all three elementary schools. So we had enough children that were interested in doing that. Otherwise, we are, I mean, we haven't had a, we've certainly helped to try to get children as ready for kindergarten as possible. We did run a virtual preschool section last year. But once they've kind of gone into kindergarten, we've let portage manage them from there.
I just didn't know if there was any sort of formalized connection other than a natural one.
Yep, just the natural, other than we did also run an online preschool section last year too.
And then I just want to ask a favor of you.
Yeah.
When the indoor play area opens up, will you please invite me? I want to see it. I'm very excited.
You can hold a board meeting there if you'd like. Yes, yes. So this, the first, if you want to call them, there's kind of five exhibit areas. The first is being, I've been advised it's not good to weld in a school building. So the first has started to be built offsite with, because the welding is happening offsite. But others will be going in. So we are open in there all summer if anyone wants to stop in this summer and see anything. But we'd be happy to have you all there when it's completed as well.
Thank you very much, Erin.
Yep. Thank you.
Oh, we have one more question for you.
Yeah, thanks for your report. Just kind of out of curiosity with your comment, obviously, there's a lot of kitchen table talks going on now with the rising gas prices, inflation, a lot of things along that line. But also because you're so much fee driven on that, I mean, where do you see, I mean, these talks and people are trying to figure out what they can afford and what can't they afford? It must be the value of a lot of families putting a high value on their kids' education to make sure that they can meet these fees. Because it's, you know, we're looking at a struggling time now and we've seen some peaks and valleys on that. So where do you see that as a prioritization that you see coming back from families?
Yeah. So I think in the childcare area, it's, it's twofold. I mean, employment is high right now, and so that often keeps childcare high. I think the shift there is we have people working in, you know, people work from home now. There's a different work style in families and some people adjusted their life enough when in COVID that they may not adjust back to a childcare setting or their children have somewhat aged out of there. And we're talking about new children that might be coming in. So in the childcare setting, when unemployment goes up, that's when, or unemployment increases, then we will start to see, we often start to see a decrease in childcare. When expenses are high, that's where, and unemployment being high, that's where people might choose one less recreation program, one less swimming, less, you know, those, those things that are extras. That's what we start to see then scale back. Because that, that is what becomes the extras, right, in a family's budget. And so when that, when we have a kind of a combination of higher expenses for our economy, then we'll see the dip there too. We do also, just for people to be aware, we provide a hundred dollars in scholarships per year per child who would be on free or reduced price lunch. So we ask them to provide a small portion of the fee. But we do provide scholarship dollars for those that would want to enroll in a community education program. And financially, it might be a struggle for them. We also help facilitate that for the youth sports collaborative too. And so when families want to play youth baseball, youth soccer through the association, we will help facilitate that they can receive scholarships to participate in that as well.
Thank you.
Any else? Okay, you think, thank you very much, Erin. And now Director Murders Storff will present the proposed twenty two, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three construction fund budget, followed by the proposed twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three general fund budget. There's no action on either of these items tonight. Board members will ask your questions after each presentation. Welcome, Director Murders Storff.
Thank you. We are going to do the construction budget first because that's the easier one. And I'm hoping it'll, oh, I think it's just in order here. There it is. I will eventually figure out this technology. So the building construction fund is very prescriptive from the Department of Education. So we are required to run anything that costs more than two million dollars as a project through the separate fund just to ensure that all of the bond proceeds and everything are tracked separately and that they fully support the fund. So they're not intermixed with general fund dollars. So the middle school roof actually exceeds the two million dollar threshold. So that's what's running through here. So we will have you adopt the budget for next year to make sure that that is consistent. So it's pretty straightforward, similar to how we ran the projects in the past years. So the revenue is the bond proceeds and any interest associated with those. And the expenditures are just the project costs. So it's pretty easy to follow and numbers that I would, I'd love to present this all day long. So the twenty one, twenty two budget is implicitly approved when you approve the bond, right? And so you'll see the bond proceeds came in, I want to say in April. So we got about three point one million dollars. Interest rates aren't fantastic right now, so we're not expecting a huge amount on that. And we did actually, we've already paid our first materials invoice. So about one point two million dollars was just materials and they have started work on that. So we're expecting about half the project cost to be done by June thirtieth. And so that one point six, seven, three million is what we have for starting July one. Again, we'll earn a small amount of interest on it because it should be all wrapped up by August. Cole would probably want me to knock on wood and make sure that it's done by August. But so that's really how this fund works is the project costs come in and we spend them. This one will be done by August and so there won't be any fund balance remaining, which is the goal, to spend all of the funds on the project. And that is it. So that's an easy breezy budget to get you started.
Okay, any questions or comments? I think you're really good at explaining it. So thank you. Let's move on to the next budget.
So this one's going to take a little more time. So this is the proposed general fund budget for next year. And again, I appreciate your patience while we worked through all of this with all of the changes and the things we've worked through for the last few months. So
I want to point out, it was in the table file, just for people looking for it.
Yep, it was in the table file. And I'm going to go through in probably a little more detail than I maybe would have typically, just because you haven't had that same amount of time to review it. And there's just quite a lot happening in this budget. And so I want to make sure that I'm covering all of it thoroughly. So enrollment, as you're aware, is a significant driver for our budget. So about seventy percent of our total revenue is enrollment driven formulas. And so you can see the eighteen, nineteen school year, we peaked at about four thousand, four hundred and sixty. APU is the weighted student calculation, so that's what our revenue is generated on. The total column is more equated to actual students. So just to understand the difference between those two, I'm going to talk a little more about the APU column today just because that's where the revenue is generating from. So the four thousand, four sixty was our last high point. So we have seen declining enrollment the last three consecutive years. And as you can see, we are projecting that to continue consistent with the demographic study and what we're, what we're seeing take place with enrollment. So the difference between eighteen, nineteen and the twenty one, twenty two is a five percent reduction in enrollment. And that is significant for our district. And I'm going to talk a little, I don't like to go really nitty gritty into numbers when I'm presenting because I think it's hard for some people to follow. And I'd rather show it on the screen, but I actually just did this while I was sitting over there. So you'll have to bear with me on this one. So the legislature did a two percent increase in the basic per pupil formula. So we're going from six thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight dollars per weighted student to six thousand, eight sixty three. So we're getting a hundred and thirty five dollars more per student. And so if I just take the four thousand, one fifty six, fifty one that we're projecting for next year and multiply that by a hundred and thirty five dollars, that's an additional five hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. And so to be clear, the, the per pupil revenue is forty seven to fifty percent of our total revenue. So we're getting five hundred and sixty one thousand dollars on that revenue, which would be great if we weren't declining. So we are declining from twenty one to twenty two, projected to decline seventy one point three weighted student units. So if I take the seventy one point three and multiply that by the six thousand, eight sixty three that they take with them, that's four hundred and eighty nine thousand, three thirty two. So we're getting an additional five hundred and sixty one, but we are losing four hundred and eighty nine. So that's a net of about seventy two thousand dollars. That's pretty difficult when you're talking about fifty percent of your overall revenue getting a seventy two thousand dollar increase at sixty million dollars or fifty nine million dollars. So I think I, I cannot underscore enough how impactful declining enrollment is to the budget. So I just wanted to walk through that, just kind of to, just to show the impact of that and how that plays out in the coming slides. So some of the revenue assumptions, we know we're getting the two percent increase from the state that they're in their second year. We know we have declining enrollment, special education. We will get an increase there because that is based on prior year expenditures. Our prior expenditures were actually down and we did not actually meet Moe. And so we're working through that. I have no concerns that we'll be able to meet that. There were several reasons during the pandemic that we had less special education expenditures. But that piece will be going up. And then you'll see an increase in the, well, you won't see it in the revenue because it's a high level, but you'll see it in the expenditures for sure. We're projecting an increase for the career tech levy. That is based on the conversations we had about the egg program qualifying. And in that conversation, I actually found out that some of our other existing programs also qualify. So we'll be getting some additional revenue for that as well, which is a great, great thing to have. Property taxes is a known, it's one of the easiest budget points for me because we certified that in December. And so we know that the operating referendum has the inflationary increase, which is helpful. But again, a lot of that is offset by the decline in what it's calculated on. And then federal sources, as you can imagine, vary by the day. But we are holding all of our, what I'm going to refer to as our regular federal. So our title, our special ed, the kind of one point four million dollars that we've kind of seen year over year. We're holding that flat. We haven't heard that it would necessarily decline, but we also don't expect more from them based on the other things that we have. But there is a significant amount of the But there is a significant amount of the additional um federal stabilization dollars that are included in this budget. And I will talk through that on the next slide. Um, and then local sources is all the kind of other miscellaneous stuff. So participation fees, um, some MA revenue, interest, um, all the kind of just little miscellaneous things. That is, um, interest is projected to uh continue decreasing. And we uh do have an assumption in for increasing participation fees to generate an additional fifty thousand dollars of revenue that we talked about during the priority-based budget process. And then we have seen a, a pretty good um bounce back of participation, but it's not quite back to pre-pandemic levels. And so the um, the revenue is projecting the participation to be the same as it was this year. We obviously hope it will come back um even stronger, but that's the current um assumption that I have in the model. So this is um the revenue projection. So you can see the last two years of audit results, the current revised budget, and then what we're proposing for twenty-two, twenty-three. The levy um is about the same. Uh, we know that that um was certified in December. I did include a slight increase for um what I'm anticipating for the career technical levy. I'm estimating probably between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars there um for additional revenue for expenses that we were already incurring. So that is a, a good bonus to come out of the budget reduction process. State sources, um, you'll see is three point eight million. Again, twenty-eight point five million dollars of that number is just the basic formula that I talked about on the enrollment slide. So seventy-one point six percent of our state aid is just the basic formula. Um, and so that just gives you a frame of how impactful um the state budget is and how um their decisions impact our budget. The other big component um included in there is special ed, um, that's about seven point five million. Um, and so those really are the two bigger components in the state sources. Federal you'll see is a pretty significant increase. Um, there is, I would say about one point eight million dollars of additional federal funding that is supporting some of the one-year items um that were continued. Um, in addition, there's just multiple federal grants and programs. There's um the program that Erin talked about that's gonna support the expanded community school. There's some specific summer funding that's included for this coming summer. Um, we have probably twenty-one separate federal budgets um, just for pandemic-related um COVID relief things with all their strings attached. So the four point four million is an estimate. Um, we're constantly monitoring that and making sure that we're using those funds in the most effective way. Um, but that's the current estimate. And then local sources, um, is estimated to be about one point one million. The revised budget does include the sale of the iPads um this past summer. And so there's a, a mount in there that is a one-time, it included the sale of land. Um, and I want to say there was one other thing in there that is not coming to the top of my head right this minute. But the one point one is um, I would say pretty consistent to what we saw pre-pandemic, just slightly less. So the expenditure assumptions, um, salaries and benefits are seventy-nine percent of our total budget. And so we are currently negotiating with all of the other um off-year agreements. Um, we settled with the Northfield Education Association last year for a two-year agreement. And so now we're working through that with all of the other groups. So I have a projection in for what I think that that will look like. Um, but as we work through that, um, those numbers will get updated and um, brought back with a revised budget in December, um, like we've done each year. Benefits, uh, we have, we're in year four of a um statutory TRA increase. So we have seen an increase of point two one percent in our employer mandated TRA contribution. So we are at, um, next year will be eight point five five percent of the total salaries. Um, so what that basically means is in, it's a percentage of their salary. So we in- increase our TRA contribution in the same percentage of their salary. And then there's an additional two and a half percent on top of that with this increase. So it's just a compounding impact, and this is the fourth of five years. So next year it will be at eight point seven five percent. Um, and they intend to keep it there for a while, assuming that the fund is still um going strong. As you are well aware, we've talked a lot about health insurance. And so there is um increased costs in the budget um for what we have currently approved as a district and some ongoing considerations. So the million dollars that we contributed covers January one to December thirty-one. And this budget will cover July one to June thirty. So there's another six months of health insurance in there that is currently unknown. Um, but we obviously are expecting an increase to the district contribution. So that's included as well. Um, we also are expecting our work comp premium to increase um fairly substantially. I don't have the exact dollar amount yet, but um I would guess probably in the seventy-five thousand dollar range um, based on some experience we've seen over the last couple of years. So the non-salary and other operational, um, we have a negotiated transportation contract increase um, that we negotiated probably a year ago now. I think we brought that contract back. I will say, um, we have the fuel clause in that contract. And so we, as a district, pay for whatever the cost is above two dollars and seventy-five cents uh per gallon, which is a little more significant right now than it maybe has been in the past. And so that is a consideration um for that amount as well. The utilities, um, we are planning to um look at ways to control that and reduce that overall. But um, just so you're aware, the franchise fee that the city implemented in place of the um, oh, what's the word? Assessments, thank you. Um, that was really significant for the district. Um, I would say that was close to ninety thousand dollars that we saw um annually that we are paying on top of our regular utility bill. So just so you're aware that that's included. We did get a refund from the city for um all of our kind of historical assessment payments is my understanding, but that's a one-time thing is what um I currently understand. So just know that that's included as well. And then the building discretionary funds, um, that was a pretty significant part included in the priority-based budget recommendations. And so I have worked through that, um, and that will require some creativity um from our buildings and our departments. Um, but still, in a way, I think that will be uh manageable for the coming year. And then the updated fund balance goal of fourteen percent is included in those assumptions as well. So um, the expenditures, but I'm gonna show the expenditures two different ways like I have historically. This is by program. These program categories are um required by the Department of Ed. And so every school district in the state is required to report their expenditures in these categories. I realized when I printed this that um all my labels aren't showing, so they're cut off a little bit, but I will walk through that. So um, again, two years of audit results, the revised budget and the proposed budget. I just need to say in this space that the nineteen, twenty and the twenty twenty-one audit results were during a pandemic. So in nineteen, twenty, we had three months of no one in our buildings, um, a discretionary spending freeze. No sub-costs, all of those things, utility savings. And twenty twenty-one was obviously a lot of different um models and experiences. So I almost think it's difficult to even look back at those two budgets and say that it's gonna be comparable for this year or for next year. Um, that's been probably the biggest challenge for me in managing um the budget is just not having that kind of consistent historical experience to go off of. So the proposed budget um incorporates all of the federal funds and all of the um items that were included and approved through the um priority-based budget process. So you will see various ones that go up and some that go down. Um, the regular is supposed to be regular education. Um, that is obviously our largest, um, that supports all of the regular um elementary, secondary learning. Um, and so that goes down, that includes things like compensatory EL. All of the, the secondary programming that's not um specifically listed elsewhere under like vocational or special ed. And so that's where you're gonna see the biggest impact um from what was recommended. The vocational um is that career tech piece, and so you'll see that actually increased. So we are moving some of the dollar amounts that were originally included or historically included under regular education down to vocational, um, after the conversations that I had with um the Department of Ed about what qualifies and what doesn't. So we're shifting some dollars down, um, and then we, we'll get a little additional revenue for that. Um, so that's not necessarily an add, but part of that shifted down. Special ed, we are um holding that as tight as possible. Um, that's obviously one where we kind of just have to go with the flow and um meet the students where they're at. But that's the current um estimate. Instructional support services is that next line. That is things um like the media centers. Um, that includes all of our technology services, our instructional services. And a handful of other smaller things. Um, so you'll see that that one decreased and that is primarily related to the um district-wide media change and the combination of um the network manager instructional services um, or the tech director and the network manager combination. So those were the two big things that were impacting there as well as some staff development pieces. And the um, there were several budgets in there that just were reducing um tech subscriptions or things like that that are included as well. Pupil support, you will see is actually um basically staying um the same or slightly higher. And that includes the counselors, um, the police liaison contract um, and some of those ancillary support services. The nursing budget is included in there, um, and transportation. So all of that is staying the same. We um, we prioritize the three um counselors. And so that's why the budget is basically the same. The transportation is gonna be a year out, any changes that we make for that. And so there's federal revenue included to support some of those expenditures. Um, but that's why that one is um basically staying the same or slightly higher due to the um increases in the contracts. Sites and buildings, you'll see is a reduction. Couple of things are playing into this one. So there was a, a one point O FTE reduction of a custodian at the middle school. So that is included in there. The utility savings is included in there. But I've also changed um in my system, the way that I'm accounting for capital and um, LTFM and sort of the kind of one-time restricted account pieces. Instead of having them all throughout, I'm putting them completely in the capital outlay so they're not influencing those other totals. And so you'll see the capital outlay is um a little more significant than um, for sure than this past year. And that's because I pulled some of it, a lot of it out of sites and buildings and included it in capital outlay. But in addition, there were just some um items through the priority-based budget that were impacting that budget as well. And the fiscal and other is basically our property insurance and our scholarship and student activity funds, I think. If I'm remembering correctly, and so our insurance is increasing um not substantially, but um there is a, a proposed increase to that, that actually renews in December um for January one. Um, but the student activities and scholarships have been pretty um stationary for the last couple of years, which is nice to have that being consistent. And then capital outlay includes all the operating capital and LTFM expenditures that were already approved um for next year as well as the five hundred thousand dollars for the um the cameras, um, which actually I just remembered should probably be like three thirty. I think that's what the bid was approved. So I will adjust that for the revised budget. But it includes all of those items um that are kind of one-time um not ongoing necessarily. And so sixty-one point three million is the uh proposed expenditures. And this is basically the same exact totals, just shown by um how we're spending them instead of where we're spending them. So salaries and benefits, like I said, is seventy-nine percent of our total budget. You will see the benefits number is um pretty significant compared to our historical spend. And that is primarily due to uh work comp and the health insurance and the TRA increase. The salaries are actually going um down slightly, um, and that is accommodating some of the um changes that we made um, through the priority-based budget process. Purchase services, supplies and dues and memberships are all impacted in a variety of ways. Um, mostly due to things from the recommendations that we made. Um, purchase services, I think the bigger one is transportation. And no, because that's still budgeted at the current year, um, the technology scholarships. And then the other thing that's happening is the way capital outlay. So some of our capital expenditures are actually purchase services or um technology subscriptions show up under supplies category based on the definitions that the Department of Ed requires us to use. And so I pulled all of those out, um, included them in capital outlay this year to help isolate that when we're projecting forward, um, so that we're not extrapolating on a number that's really a one-time um expenditure. And dues and memberships that um, that decline is really just a budget um primarily for all of the student activity funds. I had budgeted about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we've only seen about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so I reduced that to match kind of what we've seen over the last year. That was a newer um, a newer piece with Gatsby that switched where they became part of um, like truly incorporated in the general fund rather than a separate statement. And so we've kind of been um getting a feel for how they operate um and where, where that spend level will be. It is not back to um their pre-pandemic level um of fundraising and activities that we've seen. So again, the same dollar amounts, just a different way to show them. And then this is the summary, so pulling together the revenues and expenditures um and the fund balance. So as you can see, the nineteen, twenty, we ended up with a million dollar surplus. Again, that was related directly to not being in person for three months and um the spending freeze. We had a deficit um budget last year of about four hundred thousand. We are projecting to be about two and a half uh million dollars deficit spending this year. I do anticipate that that will be better than what the budget suggests. But I don't have um an updated amount yet due to the way the, the year-end things come together. So fifty-nine point seven eight million for revenue and sixty-one point three million for expenditures is still showing about a million and a half of a deficit. And so with the way uh the twenty-one, twenty-two is projected to end at sixteen, um, since this is still projecting a million and a half, we are projecting to end at fourteen point one eight percent, which I was not super thrilled when I was pulling this together to see that we're already projecting that. Again, I do think we're gonna end better this year, um, but I won't have that data until probably closer to October um, where we're, our final numbers are landing after the Um, but I won't have that data until probably closer to October um where we're, our final numbers are landing after the audit. And so, part of my biggest concern um with this budget and the way it's projecting is really the impact of the health insurance and the premium. Um, we, we've talked about cutting four and a half million dollars and a million dollars is supporting our health insurance, and that's a pretty significant impact to this budget. And so that is um as you're aware, Molly and I have been working um with our consultant on ideas. We actually have a meeting on Wednesday with our benefit advisory committee to talk through a couple of things. But that is a pretty significant impact to this budget. Um, the other thing that we will have to look pretty closely at um in the future is the the recommended elementary staffing levels. Are are actually, because we are now seeing an increase at the elementary, um which is not what we had been seeing historically. That drove up a little bit of the staffing, which I think is impacting this as well. But we will be taking all of this um and doing an updated forecast um that will be presented in July once we know what the legislature does, if anything, and um projecting that forward to make sure that we are on a good trajectory cuz I'm not going below fourteen percent. And so I wanna make sure that we're planning ahead for that um as much as we can. We are still um in a a great position. Um, there are several districts that would be excited to be at fourteen percent. Um, I'm not, but that's because we've had a great history here of um having a really strong fund balance. Fourteen is still really strong, and there are a lot of things that will happen between now and October that could change this. But I don't want to sugarcoat what it looks like. We know the health insurance is significant. And so, as we get through it, I will bring um an updated financial forecast in July, which is off of our normal um kind of financial cycle. But I think it's important to make sure that we're um well-prepared for if this is really how how it's gonna continue projecting. Um, I wanna make sure we're ahead of that, so. Um, I think that is all, that's a lot of detail, a lot of numbers. Um, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? No.
I don't want anybody to misconstrue my comments, but I think the Northfield School District voters have a greater commitment to special education than the state and the federal government. And I wish that the uh, we can't, we can't waive our responsibility. But I do wish the federal government like step up to the plate and do what they had promised, which is what percentage?
I believe they promised forty.
Right, that's what I thought the number was. To support special education for the district at forty percent. And they're vote, they're supporting at a what level?
Um, the, the federal is maybe around ten percent. Um, the state is our, is our larger component. So overall, um, I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head, eighteen. Yeah, it's uh dismal.
Well, I say it every, every time this budget issue comes up. That the uh, federal government does not support special education the way they promised.
That is true, but they do like to mandate it.
Other comments, questions? Jeff?
Yeah, thanks for your report and your hard work. On the insurance issue, are there other uh kind of floating variables out there that that change a lot? Or is that pretty dynamic or static? What do you see going into the, this fall?
Um, in terms of like the self-insurance plan and kind of what we're projecting in that.
Kind of all of the above cuz that's obviously a major issue.
Yep, so we are um I will say unfortunately, I'm gonna call it probably static. Um, the claims that we're seeing are not ones that we anticipate. Not what we would consider like one and done where somebody had knee surgery or hip replacement where it's clearly expensive, but it's a one-year deal. Um, the things that we're seeing are ongoing, chronic um and very expensive. And so we are anticipating this trend to continue. I will say the amount that we increased our premiums, so that twenty-five percent increase that we took did actually, we had one month. I wanna say it was February or March where the premiums were more than the claims, uh which hasn't happened for quite a while. And so that's a positive um that the amount that we increased it was actually sufficient to help regulate that a little bit. And so um, my hope is in combination with that increase that we did and some of the things that we're looking at with uh one digital to, we're looking um kind of at a prescription rebate model that's, that's different um and newer to the market that would help offset some of our um really expensive prescriptions and save the plan. I'm hoping with that combination um and some of those other changes that our increase for next year would not be as significant. I still think we'll need to take an increase um to make sure that we're at least continuing um to keep up with inflation. The, the twenty-five percent was really to get us in a, in the right place. And then we need to make sure that we're responsible with that moving forward. Um, we will not follow the state's model of less than inflationary increases. Um, and so I do think that that's gonna be, I think the claims trend will be consistent. Um, my hope is that with the premiums and the other things we're looking at that it will be a little bit more manageable. But we're still in the, um, we still need to address the fact that the district contributed a million dollars so that the staff didn't have to take as significant of an increase. And so when we get to December, either we're gonna have to recommit to some form of that. Um, I, I'm anticipating stepping up their increases as well and getting back to kind of a more balanced um contribution level. But that's still an impact to the general fund um at the end of the day. So, I, I'm hoping it won't be quite as um continued catastrophic increases. Like, I'm not expecting a twenty-five percent increase again. But again, we're gonna, we're only a few months into this um plan year. So we're still kind of waiting to see how that shakes out. But that doesn't maybe answer your question, but that's the information I have for today.
Other questions, comments? Tom?
Thanks uh for the report. I heard or read or something that part of the reason for the formula shortage is that there was an uptick in births in the past year. Um, and I see that the, for like the kindergarten and one through uh uh grades one through three and twenty-four, twenty-five, the numbers are are going back up. And so potentially, in six years, the numbers can continue to be going back up. But and um, that's to be, yet to be seen. I was curious, um, how much typically do our expenditures go up each year as percentage? It looked like they went up about four percent now. And I mean, it's hard to tell for these last couple of years. And then how much do our revenues typically go up? And again, that's.
Yep, so um, there's a few different ways I look at this. Um, cuz if you just look at our total expenditures, I don't think that that gives you an accurate picture because that includes all of our one-time capital purchases and things that really aren't. Um, you know, they had a restricted funding source that was only for that. So I don't like to include those when I'm considering like operational increase. Um, I would say four to six percent is probably pretty normal um between transportation and salaries, benefits and all of the pieces. Um, revenue on the other side, I would say eh, we're lucky if it's a one percent, one and a half percent increase. Because a two percent increase from the state is on fifty-five percent of our revenue. And so the only other places we're getting increases is the SPUD formula, which we do typically see an increase. But again, we know that that's already, um, there's already a significant cross subsidy there. And so that's usually just exacerbating that. Um, if we increase fees, um, sometimes there's additional revenue there, but that's such a small piece of it that it does not actually equate into a significant percentage. Um, federal almost always has been held flat. And so we don't see, I mean, if you compare right now and look across at the federal, that's a huge dollar amount. But that's obviously um special circumstances right now. And so I would say on average, um, the other thing that impacts it is, is our enrollment. So if our revenue, if our enrollment's increasing, our revenue is gonna look like it's going up faster. Um, and so there's a lot of different components to it. But I would say on average, all things standard um and consistent, which never happens. Um, one, one to two percent if we're lucky.
So year after year, we're losing money and by, you know, twenty years from now, we'll just be broke.
Well, we are, we've been talking about the lack of uh inflationary funding from the state for the last thirty years. And this is the mathematical problem. So you can't expect to keep staff with competitive wages um on a, a one percent revenue increase. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Corey?
Well, I hate to follow that picture, but uh, I have a small budget question. Thanks for the thorough review. So concerning local revenue sources, you'd mentioned one, one item, pieces like land sale and selling tablets for iPads.
Yep.
Trying to teach my children the difference between tablets and iPads, not the same necessarily. Um, what typically is part of that? And then a couple of years ago, it looks like we had twice as much revenue from that. Did we unload a bunch of MacBooks or something that year?
So, um, you will see probably every other year an increase for a one-time sale. So, we have um typically four-year leases. And so our iPad lease and our MacBook lease are two years apart. And so basically every other year, we're either selling MacBooks or we're selling iPads. And so this last year was um, the MacBooks, I believe. Um, and now, not next year, but the following summer, pending some other changes. Um, we'll be selling the iPads again and getting renewed devices um and going through that process. The um, so if I go, I'm just gonna go back and look at the actual number here. Because I think one of the other things um that gets included in that number uh, I'm not a fan of the way that the accounting rules require me to present it. But um, cuz on, on my side, it shows as an ex, basically an expenditure. So when we issue a capital lease, it's showing as um an other financing source. And so I include that under local sources. So if we issued a one million dollar um lease contract, we are showing a million dollars of revenue in that line item. But then there's an offsetting million dollars recording that lease in the expenditure. So, it's an accounting requirement, but it's not real dollars in terms of like physically what happened. Um, like I didn't deposit a million dollars and spend a million dollars. Um, and so I don't love that. So I would um, I don't have it in front of me, but I would bet um that the two point six includes one of the, the lease sales. Um, and then the other thing that happened, I wanna say it was in nineteen twenty, but I'd have to look, is we sold um, or we did a lease purchase of the shop. And that was about six hundred and six thousand. Um, I wanna, off the top of my head, I wanna say six hundred and six thousand. But I believe that was also in nineteen twenty. Um, and so it depends, it could have been in twenty twenty-one, but I'm pretty sure it was nineteen twenty. Um, it happened like July twenty-fifth. I just don't know which year. Um, so those are the kinds of things that really can swing it. But if you, if I gave you more history prior to when we were selling, cuz we didn't, um, I would say we're, we've sold devices two, maybe three times now. And so we had not done that before, like we gave them back to Apple and got new devices. Um, but financially, we did the math and it's advantageous for us to do that. And so we switched that, but if you look historically, I would say one million to one point three million is pretty um consistent for what we would see for kind of the normal uh fees. You know, participation fees, interest, admissions, M A revenue and all the kind of donations. There's just a lot of um little things that are included in there. So, that was probably more than you were hoping for, but. Okay.
Other comments, questions?
Well, I have a question. You mentioned that we have to pay the fuel costs if it goes over two seventy-five a gallon. And I'm wondering if you have a sense what that might mean in actual dollar amounts.
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can um, I can look at some of our uh latest transportation bills and get you some information about that.
And it may be impossible to really predict, but uh, the fuel price is increasing significantly.
Yep.
Something we need to watch.
Yep.
Um, and thank you for your presentation. Did you wanna add anything? Uh, Matt?
Outstanding as usual.
Thank you.
Very, lots of, lots of numbers, very clearly organized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more.
Oh, no.
I'm not sure we can, not sure we can debate the cost of the fuel. We can't not transport kids. And if the fuel cost goes up, we have an obligation to transport kids and pay the bill.
Yeah, I think we're just trying to determine what kind of potential budget impact will that have for us, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, now Dr. Hillman will present the proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar.
Yes, so we have a proposed twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar. Several years ago, we did two uh school year calendars at one time. We continue to get feedback from families uh wanting to know the school calendar well in advance. We know that many companies require their employees to bid their vacation uh quite a bit in advance. And so um, believe it or not, we have already gotten calls and questions about the twenty-three, twenty-four calendar, even though it's well more than a year out. Uh, we have taken some additional time this year. Normally, we bring this to in February. Obviously, we had some other items that were on front burner uh for that point. We took a little bit of extra time. So what we're proposing for the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar is based on our conversations with the Meet and Confer Committee uh from the Northfield Education Association, Vice Chair Gerwitz and uh Chair Claudia Gonzalez-George are part of that. Uh, so we met, uh, we discussed uh the new contract language that's going into effect for this coming school year and how to place days on the calendar. So you'll see that uh staff will return on August twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three for the beginning of that school year. Uh, while we're proposing additional family kickoff conferences for the thirtieth and thirty-first of August of twenty twenty-three, with the first official school day being September fifth. What you'll notice that's different about this calendar versus the one, the revised version that you adopted for twenty-two, twenty-three is that rather than having two teacher preparation days at the end of each quarter, we're going to have one teacher preparation day roughly per month. Uh, four of them or three of them, I should say, uh align exactly with the end of the quarter. So you'll see that um, we don't have a teacher preparation day uh after the beginning of the school year until November sixth. Then you'll see that we have one in December just prior to uh winter break beginning. Then you will see that we do have two teacher preparation days in between the first and second semesters. We uh do not have a teacher preparation day in February. We already have a staff development day planned. We have a teacher preparation day coming out of uh April, or excuse me, coming out of spring break on April first. And then we do have another teacher preparation day um on uh May twenty-fourth, bookending Memorial Day weekend. As we looked at distributing these teacher preparation days, remember that there was a, one of the key learnings that we had during the pandemic were teachers specifically really feeling um that those, what we called the pivot days, if you remember, in between learning models were really valuable, point the stop and actually really think and plan. And so as we worked with the Meet and Confer Committee, this coming year, we have two days in between the first quarter and second quarter, second quarter and third quarter and third quarter and fourth quarter. Their request was, could we potentially try to spread those out so there'd be more frequent opportunities for that? So we will end on June sixth. Um, I wanna reiterate that uh, the way that we get to this is that we have brought the, we have brought several days that used to be considered off calendar. So those were days that were part of the one hundred and eighty-seven days that weren't reflected on the calendar. They were to reflect some of the other kinds of things that, the work that happens outside of school. But again, trying to put those days on the calendar to identify and specify uh when that work is getting done. So uh, this calendar represents that conversation with Meet and Confer. It represents our next iteration of continuously improving the calendar. It represents our next iteration of continuously improving the calendar. And uh we offer it this evening, just as your first reading.
Corey.
I have a question concerning what's in front of us, but also the calendar for the coming school year. Um, and I apologize if we did discuss this previously, but I'm curious about moving the family conferences at the beginning of school year ahead of Labor Day. Uh, can we talk a little bit about the reasoning behind that? And is there concern about uh less attendance for that? And remind me, I know this past year as a parent in the district, we were able to do that in person. Is there gonna be a virtual option moving forward?
Yes, Corey. So great question. So this year we moved the family conferences uh in the revised calendar. Before the beginning of the school year. When we came to the agreement with the Northfield Education Association about the increase or moving the teacher preparation days from off calendar to on calendar. We had already adopted uh a twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. In order to move those days into the calendar and give those two teacher preparation days in between the quarters. And not to extend the school year, right? Because we had already identified, we know people really look at what is that last day of the school year. We did not want to adjust known breaks like winter break. Or spring break because we know people have already made plans. And so, yes, there are people who have made plans for that last week uh in August as well for that addition. But when we looked at all of the different options, we felt that that was the least intrusive. To the most people. I certainly want to share that we've heard from people who are disappointed um because they had uh plans already. For our own staff, we'll certainly work with those folks. Um, you know, people using personal leave, you know, things like that that typically. Would it be something that would happen during uh workshop week? So it was intended so that we could capture those days and not change the rest of the breaks. We do think that uh we will have very good attendance at those family conferences because if you recall. Prior to the pandemic, we, we have done a version of family conferences at the elementary schools for nearly a decade. Um, it was called uh Ready, Set, Go Day, if you recall that. And so the tradition of the elementary schools having those um. Days before the start of the school year was a long-held practice. And then really it does, it's, it's on us to make sure that we make that those events meaningful. Uh, for middle school and high school families for them to attend. We've had very good attendance at the middle school. Um, any of our conferences, the high school have been challenging. Um, just as kids get older, we do see the participation drop. We've been working with the high school administration to really think through how we can reboot those days. We had high attendance the first year of the pandemic. And we're continuing to improve. We're looking at some ideas like, you know, the follow your child's schedule. So that you'll be able to meet every teacher. That's very hard at the secondary, but you can't do that with one-on-one conferences. But you can if you follow your child's schedule. I'm not saying that's what we're doing. I'm just gonna say that's one of the ideas um that we're looking at.
And then will there be a virtual option? I can't recall if there was this past year. Eight months ago was a long time ago.
Yeah, one of the things that we continue to work, we of course prefer to have people in person. But we are continuing to leverage and find what is the right place for virtual options within our parent communication. One of the things you're gonna be hearing about in the next couple of months is we are doing some dramatic changes to what we would consider parent-teacher conferences. Current parent-teacher conference model is outdated. It's a relic of the past. To think that we can meet with parents twice a year to explain how their children is doing is just not acceptable in a modern society. So we right now have a teacher work group who are challenging to say, we need to have a different process for um. Updating families and touch points is the term that we're really using. How do we make that an ongoing conversation through the year? You know, rather than just a, a couple of times per year. So. That means there has to be virtual options in that place. To begin the year, we are gonna really push people to come in person. We think that the virtual options are best. After we have had a chance to meet face-to-face and start to develop that relationship that. This, this uh combination of virtual and in-person, we're all learning what's the right way to do it. So would we turn someone away who wanted a virtual option at the beginning of the year at the elementary? Or possibly the middle school? No, it's difficult to follow your kid's schedule virtually if that's how the high school ends up doing it. Um, but the fact is that we are certainly looking at virtual options. But we want to see people in person to start the year. We think that's the best way to develop relationships. Then. Those virtual options, whether it be a phone call, whether it be um a Zoom conference, things like that. Those things become more meaningful after we met in person.
Last question.
Yes.
Considering those family conferences, how are Portage families dealt with for that?
Portage families do a virtual option, obviously there, yes.
Other questions, comments? Hey, um, we'll be voting on this next time, right? Okay, thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to. Dr. Hillman's uh superintendent operations and COVID nineteen update.
So here is the good news, is that the good news is our COVID data is starting uh to uh decrease. So as you know, we really had a uh steep drop-off or a, a strong drop-off between the end of January and just recently. In the last month, we, we did see our uh cases in previous fourteen days get to about as high as around a hundred and fifty. Um, when I updated the dashboard this morning, we were back into the seventies and it's continued to go down. So we really think, what I'm really hopeful is that um Minnesota and specifically Northfield is kind of the nation-leading edge. Of this latest um increase. So that's what we're really hoping for. Uh, again, what we've seen is that um influenza-like illness rates are well within that five percent area. And in the report I provide, I write this report and make sure that I have the data available as of Thursday. Um, I wrote in my, the report during the week of May ninth to the thirteenth, six of seven schools had averaged less than three percent of their students absent. Due to ILI systems and all schools were below five percent. When we look at that updated data from last week. Uh, we looked at five of seven schools were below one percent for the week average of ILI. And all schools were below three percent. So we're in a very good spot with our ILR, ILI rates. Um, and so we're very, we're hopeful and we're seeing some positive uh movement. In terms of the COVID data dropping back down again. And again, we really hope that that is a, a good indicator for uh our community moving forward, that we had that leading edge. Of what we're reading about nationally now in a, in a spike here in the late spring. So uh we thank people, we, we did have um a return, I would say for probably eight to ten school days. We had a return of a very difficult time filling substitute positions again. Thankfully to our uh full-time substitutes and then some uh really hard work by people at our buildings. We are able to put things together. Um, so that we are able to obviously run our programs. Um, but we did have about an eight to ten day period where. It started to feel again like it was January. And so it was very tough. And I thank our principals and our teachers and everyone who steps in. Uh, in our HR department who really helps make sure that we were able to weather that um mini spike. It wasn't anything like what we saw in January. Obviously, in terms of the number of cases, but there was some impact uh in terms of. The substitute situation for a short period of time. And part of that was also impacted by the late arrival of spring. Uh, because we had so many athletic competitions that were canceled early on, some full-day competitions. Were right when we saw that increase in COVID. We also had, you know, things like the track team being gone for a full day, which takes out a few staff members with it. And so. There were a combination of a number of things that, that came to that, but we won't uh sugarcoat that COVID was an issue. Uh, there. And so again, we're hopeful that we have moved past that or that we're going in the right direction. Uh, wanna highlight uh again, a couple of things that. We missed terribly. And I'm so happy to report to you that we did have our middle school and high school career exploration day return for the first time in a couple of years. Uh, as you may remember, um, this is a day for middle school students and some high school students. To get exposure to career and technical, or technical careers, if you will. And we had thirty-eight different companies present. You know, students had a chance to, to visit with people who drive snowplow trucks for Dakota County. Uh, EMTs, they had uh folks with lots of ag equipment. The Civil Air Patrol was their host. Um, other, some other engineering firms and technical firms, they're talking about their careers. And I love listening to people who love what they do. I could have spent the whole day there just listening. Uh, I don't have to know what it's about, but passionate people sharing their love of their vocation with our students is big. And the reason is. It gives kids an opportunity to have a positive vision of their future self as it relates to employment. And so when kids see people thrilled with a technical career, we think that that helps kids have that positive future vision. And then uh as an example of our commitment to continuous improvement, a few years ago, um, after one of our events. We talked about how could we help companies immediately hire some of our students on the spot? So what is now happening is our high school counselors are looking at this time of year, which students have a plan already for next year? Are, and are there students who don't yet have a plan? For those students who don't yet have a plan, they're invited and any other people who are interested as well. There are several companies that interview high school seniors right on the spot at the end of the day. And will make job offers for students to be able to enter the workforce immediately following their graduation. So I think that's a great example of how we continuously improve. And again. We want to thank uh John Stens and Heather La Croix from Force America. They had a lot of people on site that day because they are the driving force behind. Get it? Driving force, Force America, the driving force, these are the jokes people. Um, the, they're really the key player in that particular uh event. And then of course, Mark Enzru and uh Mike Lokeef are uh always just instrumental uh from the school side and. Candace Godfrey and uh Healthy Community Initiative, strategic partner supporting that event. So. It was a thrill to be there uh and see all of these different technical careers represented and uh for kids to start to have some of that opportunity. Uh, then a few days later, we brought back the Student Data Summit, which is part of our Achievement and Integration Plan. So this brought together uh student leaders uh from Northfield, Faribault, Tri-City United, and Waterville, Elysian, Moorestown. These young leaders started to develop new relationships with others from across different districts. And they started to look at their own school district demographic disaggregated data around grades and attendance. And ideating what action steps could they do to uh close those gaps? And so. Uh, again, thanks to Hope Langston and to all the folks from uh our district who put that together. Uh, just great to see those young leaders together. Thinking about big problems and offering ways that they could uh help solve them. So. Really an excellent event. I had a chance to be the opening speaker there. Always super fun. Gotta love the Bridgewater Boosterthon Fun Run, right? It's a, just a wonderful event every year. That's their PTO's main fundraiser of the year. It's really unique uh in the fact that Bridgewater is the school that does this. Boosterthon is a partner, a company you partner with. They have a program uh really related to the sponsorship of students in the Fun Run, but there's also a kickoff video that some of you might have seen. Each class identifies a name based upon the theme. So one of my favorites was uh Mrs. Cade, who is the, one of the kindergarten teachers. That was the. The Okade Corral this year. That was their name because it was a Western theme. Uh, they have a number of things that involve some character education instruction as part of this. And then they finish with this Fun Run. They had anticipated they would potentially raise around forty-five thousand dollars. And they raised sixty-four thousand dollars. So congratulations to Bridgewater. Um, and all of those folks who participated in that important uh PTO event there. And they got perfect weather. The day before, it was pretty darn cold. It was not a very nice day the day before, but the weather recovered. Uh, High School Task Force, uh, we have concluded our initial meetings. We are working with Wold and Knutson uh to begin or to. Uh, shape their report that's gonna be presented to you during a work session prior to the June thirteenth board meeting. Um, we've talked about this before, you know, we, they will be able to calculate. Um, they're gonna calculate what. The will of that committee was in three different ways. They're going to have an option that would look at a potential renovation of the building forty million, which would be the tax-neutral option. Because that's the amount of taxes that will come off the district tax rolls as we retire debt in twenty twenty-four. They're gonna provide an option that would uh be at fifty-five million dollars and then one at seventy million dollars. That seventy million dollar cap. Was based upon the recommendations of the School District Finance Advisory Committee. Now, of course, this does not preclude the board from determining that you would like to consider moving ahead with a new building because. Wold knows how to calculate that, right? They know what's the going rate for a, a new high school with so many students. They do a per uh square foot calculation. So I just wanna, I wanna share that that is still an option for you to consider. But we've asked that committee to really focus on the renovation portion of the existing, it could also include some additions. Uh, we do know that our athletic facilities are falling behind our peers. Uh, significantly. Um, we were behind for a while. Now we're seeing some other districts who have invested in that. And when we talk about declining enrollment, we do have to understand that people are looking. At those kinds of facilities when they choose a community. If we choose a community south of the river. We will look at that we are now not quite as up to snuff in terms of other school districts and their athletic facilities. Um, so that's gonna be, you're gonna see that's gonna be a part of what their plan will be to share with you as a part of a master facility plan. And then the final part I want to just share and talk through just briefly is that. You may have read uh that the city of Northfield has shared publicly that there is a potential buyer. For the Northfield Ice Arena. It's on record, it's Aurora Pharmaceuticals. Um, first of all, the thing that we have to say is, how outstanding is it that we have a high-tech company? Who's been in Northfield, who is expanding, who is looking to make Northfield its home. We've talked for years about how do we increase our industrial base with that specific piece of looking to get more entrenched in the high-tech industry. And so we're very grateful to Aurora Pharmaceuticals for choosing Northfield as the place that they want to expand. As you may know, they bought the old Northfield News Building. They have quite a bit of other property near the Ice Arena. Um, part of uh what was shared is that they are also interested in potentially making con- contribution. Toward the relocation uh of that Ice Arena. And we are in discussions with the city that the school district. Uh, may need to think through, what is our role in that Ice Arena moving forward? We discussed it with the Facilities Committee uh last week. They have a, a few understandable reservations about that, uh but we continue to be a partner at the table. Does that mean that the school district ends up being more responsible for the Ice Arena than we have been in the past? It's a possibility. There's a number of things and financing ways that uh the city can look at this. And we are a strategic partner in that effort. Um, and how strategic, how strategic a partner are, we will wait to see. Uh, we have hockey programs that have been very successful. We also know that uh even without the potential sale of the Ice Arena, we know that there were gonna be, have to be substantial upgrades to that facility. For a variety of reasons, including the fact that the uh current um chemical that is used to make the ice. Is, is going to be banned from use in a few years. We can still purchase it. Um, but it's just something that is not going to be available for purchase uh for a tremendous amount of time longer. So this creates a dilemma for the community that we will be a partner at the table and you can expect to hear us talking about. How does that potential ICE issue impact what we are looking at with a Northfield High School plan? If they're going to move that facility. Um, we need to talk about where would that be? Is it, is it something that is partnering in the city? Is, would it make sense to be put on our campus somewhere? Does that make sense? It would from our perspective, right? Since we're now the primary tenant, there's a number of different options. We don't have it all for you tonight, but. The city did talk about this at their council meeting last week. Um, so I wanted to make sure. And we did talk about the ICE dilemma with. The High School Task Force as well, just because we knew that there was something coming that we were going to have to either be involved in some way, shape, or form in the potential renovation. Of that uh arena. And now with the potential sale, again, we come back to. For years, we have wanted to increase, we have been saying we need to increase the tax base. And we've, we have a high-tech industry that is going to continue to add. Really high-paying technical jobs to this community in the range of seventy-five to ninety thousand uh dollars per position. That's good for Northfield. And then if it means that we have to think about how do we partner, what is our role in the Ice Arena um relocation? That is a, a good thing. It's a good place for us to be because when we increase the tax base, that helps the rest of our taxpayers as well in the long term. Two other items, one other item uh before I get to the legislative part. I just think it's important for us um. To acknowledge when, when things happen across our country that do have an impact. And I just do want to take a moment to acknowledge the mass shooting victims um in Buffalo, New York. And specifically, when these kinds of uh issues happen, the perpetrator of that has been very clear in terms of what was published. That that was unequivocally a racist act. And when those kinds of things targeting uh people of color happen in our country, I will tell you, I've talked to uh. Scores of students over the last few years. And I'll tell you, is those things impact our students here locally? It makes them wonder, are they safe? Thankfully, our high school administration able to talk through that, assure people that they're as safe as they can be. Our technician here, the, the impact, our technician who is, who is recording the, the meeting tonight, Tim Drake, he's from Buffalo, New York. That impacts us right here. And what's most disturbing about this is this eighteen-year-old young man. Um, is someone who was sitting in a classroom ninety miles from where I graduated from high school. And he was sitting in a high school classroom last year. So it is incumbent upon us to make sure we continue to teach our children that every human life has value. And that every person has merit. And so while this might have occurred seven hundred miles away. Uh, we cannot ignore the fact that these kinds of incidents, we have become a little more desensitized to these. But these are folks, you know, who um were grocery shopping, right? Think about what we do when we grocery shop. And so I think that these kinds of things prompt all of us. To just take a look and remember that um this young person was sitting in a high school classroom, most likely somewhere last year and. Again, not too far, far from where I grew up. And uh it certainly has impact. And it certainly has impacted people right here locally, not only as Tim Drake, a Buffalo, New York native, but we know there are several other Buffalo, New York natives in our community. So we just needed to take a moment. And I think just as a community, we need to reiterate and double down on our piece that every person has value and every person has merit. And as public educators, it's our responsibility to make sure that we continue to reinforce that message to avoid those kinds of things happening here and other places. So I just felt it was important for us to take a few moments to acknowledge that. Now shifting from that to a very different topic is our legislative update. And what I want to share is my disappointment is not the right word, but that's the word I'm going to choose to use right now in, in this space. So we had a 9.3 billion with a B dollar surplus. The legislature has had several months to figure out how they were going to leverage us to improve the state. A grand bargain that seems very reasonable was reached well over a week ago, probably almost two weeks ago now. In terms of a mix of appropriate tax cuts for money coming back to the people who paid it, some investment in the, the state's, what I would call human infrastructure, including about a billion dollars for education. And then leaving some on the bottom line for the next legislature to use. And we couldn't get it done. We being the big we, right? I mean, we couldn't get it done. These are our elected representatives. So what is so disheartening is that all of the work that went into this and we get no bill. Now, people are hopeful for a special session. We are hopeful for a special session as well. We understand that things got pretty close to a deal on the E-12 bill, but not close enough. And in fact, over the weekend, actually, the leadership in both the House and the Senate, not even the chairs, they were doing the direct negotiation because the committee was not able to get their, the conference committees were not able to get their work done by Friday. How does this impact us here? What it impacts us is that the Senate proposal, the original Senate proposal, in which the Senate very clearly listened to the hundreds and hundreds of people who had asked them to address the Special Education Cross Subsidy. And when I talked with both folks who lead those conference committees, in fact, House Chair Jim Davity told us on an advocacy call that, oh, he knew that Northfield was all for the Special Ed Cross Subsidy because he had really heard from people. Which shows that our Legislative Action Committee had done their work. What I'll tell you is that the Senate proposal with a small amount for the letters program, which we've shared with you is something we have an interest in, would have been around 1.7 million dollars for Northfield Public Schools to reduce our cross subsidy, just under that. I believe you saw a deficit spend of around 1.5 million tonight. So anyone who doesn't think that the Special Education Cross Subsidy is, it's not, it's not like it's the gap. It is the gap. So I implore the legislature, I implore the governor to call a special session. I implore the Education Committee to come to a reasonable settlement that gives us the money to help offset this unacceptable problem that has been a problem for decades. We had the chance to take care of it now and we failed. But we do get a second bite at the apple. So we hope that that comes this week. Anybody listening, if you'd like information on how to advocate the special session is called, please email me directly. I'm happy to give you that information. But the issue is that we just need to get this done because we had the chance to do it and we just cannot waste it. So I didn't read what had, had been written, which is always a bad thing. But I think people can hear where I am at. This is just, it's not responsible. That's what I'm going to say. It's just not responsible. So with that, I would ask Cory, who's also a member of our Legislative Action Committee, if you'd like to share any of his insights on the failed negotiations.
I think you covered it pretty well. I will add that I saw late this afternoon that while the leaders in the House and Senate didn't comment publicly, it sounds like they're going to have a cool enough period before maybe a special session is called. So I think some would hope that maybe they'd come back this week yet to finish the work because it's close in a lot of cases. There's a number of omnibus bills that have to be finished, but they're close. So I don't know. I mean, they technically have six weeks. I hope they don't wait till the end of June, but maybe in a few weeks, we'll see them called back by the governor. I, I did want to add because we are having new representatives next year. So I just wanted to add that Representative Lippert is retiring from the House and Senator Dreheim has been redistricted to a new district. So thank, thank you to them for their efforts this year and for their communication with us. I don't know if you want to add something?
Yeah, I do just, I mean, I thank both Senator Dreheim and Representative Lippert. And I exchanged quite a few text messages with Representative Lippert on Sunday. And I want people to know he was really carrying our message to try to make sure that we were getting a bill done. So again, I'm, I'm very grateful for Representative Lippert and for Senator Dreheim, who has given me countless hours, frankly, in terms of listening and, and hearing. And I think that he really did hear about the Special Education Cross Subsidy as well.
So regardless of what happens here with the end of the fiscal year, we'll have new folks next year. So LAC will be back to work, developing new relationships.
We did have 15 people. I mean, we met every other Saturday and we had routinely, Cory, probably 15 people show up to that meeting and taking action. So this is really good. You know, the state government is a participatory sport. You got to show up, right? And so people in Northfield did show up and I'm very proud of them.
So thank you to those members.
Absolutely.
That's all I have for legislative. I do have a comment on that question though, unless others have legislative questions. Okay, just an update for the board members because I know the packet was put together before numbers were updated concerning COVID. Just because the last number is a high number on this chart, it is back down to 85. So it has been cut by more than half. So just want to share that for folks who might be looking at that. Timing doesn't always work out with the packet, obviously.
Yes, the packet is tight with that timeframe. And so I thank you for pointing that out.
And then concerning the high school, a few meetings ago, I had asked about the current assessed value of the high school. Just to have additional context, when we're talking about adding 40 or doing projects for 40, 55 or 70 million dollars. Is the building worth 20 million? Is it worth 100 million? I don't know if we have an answer for that yet. And I'm sure we'll find out more June 13th, but just want to make sure that's going to be addressed. I'm sure it would be at that meeting.
Do you want, sorry, um, do you want the the value that Rice County has it assessed at or are you thinking like an actual appraisal?
An appraisal, because I know the county would probably be low. And I'm talking specific to the building, not the whole property.
Okay.
Because if we're going to invest $40 million into the building, I want to know if
Sure.
we're adding it to a $20 million building or a $60 million building? Because if we talk about the potential, not them in favor of it, of a new building, I want to have the full picture of what those numbers actually mean.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, Jeff?
Yeah, a lot of information there in your last segment. Thank you. One point that I wanted to make is on the vocational interests of our young people. And years ago, you know, we had talked about the main thing and the main thing in a sense at the age of like seventh, eighth grade and sixth is just the exposure to these, to what's out there, just to get people thinking, kids thinking about what, you know, what are their talents? What are their skills? What are industries of the future? And I think that we're doing much more of that. In fact, I put on, I'd like to make sure that I could be, you know, see some of these things that have gone on. I'd like to see that. It sounds like that program's a neat deal. And, and I think that that's just really something I'm happy about seeing that we're doing. And it's just exciting to see kids getting involved and get excited about their futures and what their talents are looking for. You know, obviously to get out of school and get a vocation going is, is just, you know, one of the fundamental reasons why we're here. So thank you.
And again, this is a unique, we, every year we, since we started it, oh, actually probably after the second, we've had other districts visit to see how could they replicate it? And we did have another district, another local district here last week, looking at it, wanting to replicate the program.
I like the second, what Jeff said that I know in past years, we've been notified when it's happening. And if I could just ask that in the future, you'd let us know, because I'd love to stop by too. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for the update, Dr. Hillman. And now we're going to move on to committee reports and we have one tonight from Tom.
So I'm with the, on the liaison to the Human Rights Commission. After months of due process, the Human Rights Commission passed a motion to recommend to the City Council approval of an ordinance amending. And I just wanted to get this all specific and written down. Amending Northfield City Code Chapter 30, Health and Sanitation, to add a new section 30 dash one, prohibition of conversion therapy for minors and vulnerable adults. The tentative timeline is June 7th for the City Council first reading. And for those who don't know from Wikipedia, conversion therapy is a pseudo-scientific practice of attempting to change an individual's sexual orientation from homosexual or bisexual or heterosexual or their gender identity from transgender to cisgender, cisgender using psychological, physical or spiritual interventions. And the other thing is the commission also voted to authorize a Festival of Nations Community Picnic for Saturday, July 23rd. Details to follow. I think it's supposed to start at around noon and the intended location is Greenville Park area. So that's it.
Thank you, Tom. And if you do get an official invitation for that or more information, we'd love to hear about it. All right. The next on the agenda is approving the consent agenda. So we'll now move on to.
If I can just make one comment before you take the motion. I do want to note in the table file that we do have a resignation in the table file from Dr. Lear, the high school principal, who has served in that role for the last 16 years. And we congratulate Dr. Lear on his appointment as a faculty member at Minnesota State University Mankato, where he will advise doctoral students and teach future administrators. So administrator that long of a tenure, I just felt was important to point out prior to the board taking action.
Can we turn him down?
I don't believe that that's an option.
Okay. So, well, as a, oh, no, go ahead.
I called Dr. Lear and expressed my appreciation for what he's doing. That he has done an exemplary job in Northfield. But all of my education courses, I never took an education course from anybody who ever watched it in, in a public school. And I thought that was an astounding, I would say, an indictment on what they were trying to do. And I, I celebrate Dr. Lear's goal to be able to teach in, in what is a significant position of responsibility.
Other comments? So as a reminder, there were some personnel items other than Dr. Lear in the table file. And that would be added to the consent grouping. And is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Cory. Second by Tom. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're now on to the items for individual action. So we have two items to take action on tonight. First, we have the Arcadia School Contract, which is up for approval.
Yes, so let me just pull this one item back up. Thank you. So we do have a modified motion in the agenda. So if you go back to January, you've been hearing about the Arcadia Charter School contract renewal. We are proposing an, an extension or a new contract, if you will, from July 1, 2022 to June 30th of 2027. Has been, has been our practice. After we introduced the contract to you, we sent it to the Minnesota Department of Education for a statutory review. The statutory review was successful on all fronts, but just a couple of pieces. There are a couple of bylaw items that Arcadia has to make some modifications to, to align with current statute. So what I'm asking you to do, and, and they are planning to do that yet this week, it's around their admissions and some things around that. So what I'm, I just have modified the motion to say motion to approve the new contract between Northfield Public Schools and Arcadia Charter School pending the Minnesota Department of Education's recommended changes to their bylaws for the timeframe of July 1, 2022 through June 30th of 2027. So I just want to point out that it would be contingent upon them making those changes, which talked with Director Stelter last week, they plan to actually call a special meeting later this week to make those. They're fairly minor, but they're just to make sure they're in alignment with the current statute.
All right, do I have a motion to do just what Dr. Hillman said? A move by Cory. Is there a second? Second by Tom? Any discussion, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item up for individual action is the Policy Committee Recommendations. So what's the best way to do this? Should I get a general motion for all of them?
I think that's a good way to do it.
Could I have a motion to approve the policies as presented, the recommendation?
Motion to approve, okay.
I'm going to say moved by Jeff. And handbooks too, policies and handbooks. And second by no, okay. So let's start out with some discussion. Maybe we can just go through them in order. And if anyone has any comments or questions, just let me know. The first one is the Arius Learning Center Student Handbook.
And there was one question I just wanted to address from the last time around honor roll. And the three secondary buildings are coming into alignment in terms of changing the way that they recognize student performance. So the traditional honor roll model, they have a concern that that did not recognize enough, enough students in different ways for their achievement. And so they have been working to ideate and to activate different ways that students are congratulated for their academic achievement and achievement in other areas. So this you'll see will be aligned with all three of the secondary school handbooks.
Does that mean no more honor rolls in the Northfield News?
You, that, that does. And actually, they haven't had the honor roll in the Northfield News, my understanding is, for at least over a year and a half now.
Any other comments? Okay, let's move on to the next handbook then, which is the Middle School Handbook. Any comments or questions? Moving on to the Middle School Youth Center and BLAST Handbook. Plus Handbook, any comments or questions on the Plus Handbook? Any comments or questions on the Student Citizenship Handbook?
I'd like to address one question that came to me from a board member who, a couple of questions from a board member who could not be here tonight. And that, those questions were surrounding bullying. So I thought this was really, I'm, I'm just going to describe. So the Student Citizenship Handbook calls bullying out and frames it in the way that it does all of the other potential infractions that could happen that are governed by the Student Citizenship Handbook. And so the questions were around the who sends it to the principal? How do people really investigate and understand the situation? You know, what is follow through like? And so this is one of those times where we, we put in brief, if you will, because we're trying to keep the Student Citizenship Handbook reasonable about the, how bullying is handled. But we just want to remind people, we have an entire policy, Policy 513 that governs bullying. And so the piece is about what the timeframe is very explicit in terms of who can make a report, if anyone who can receive a report, what happens when a report is taken? The definition of bullying, what is actual bullying? There's a lot of, there's bullying-like behavior that might not actually be bullying, right? Because the definition is that it's a repeated behavior where there's an imbalance of power between students. So there's a difference between the kinds of things that's bullying-like behavior and bullying by definition of that policy. So the questions that had come through from a board member were really just about, you know, who reports it? You know, how does a teacher or another staff member understand the situation to make that differentiation? Is it bullying or is it bullying-like behavior? At what point does bullying-like behavior become bullying? And so that, and then the fact about what's the follow through like? All of those pieces are outlined in the policy and they're time-driven. Once a report is given, there's a certain three days, three business days that it takes to be able to speak before you begin an investigation. So I just wanted to point that out that in the Student Citizenship Handbook, it looks like bullying is one entry like everything else. But it does point to several other policies that really delineate what those processes are.
Thank you.
And it's actually 514, not 513, sorry about that.
Moving on to Policy 504, the Student Dress in Appearance. Comments, questions? The next one is Policy 513, Student Promotion, Retention, and Program Design. Policy 520, Students, Employees, and/or Policy Five Twenty, Students, Employees and/or District Data Including Research Requests. Policy Five Twenty Six, Hazing Prohibition. And I think we got through all of them, so.
I would just like to point out that we had spirited discussion about several of these at our last meeting and we shared responses to questions that people had, both at that meeting and then follow ups tonight.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve all these handbooks and policies that I just went through. And so all, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we move on to items for information. Do we have any items tonight?
We do not.
Okay, that's quick then. Number ten, future meetings. We have three meetings that I want to point out. On June thirteenth, we actually have two meetings. One at from four to five forty five, a work session right here in the boardroom. And then after that, we'll move right into a regular board meeting at six o'clock, again, right here. And then we have Monday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty two, six P M. Regular board meeting. And I just, before we go, can I just ask you to remind us about the graduations?
We will. And we'll look to Anita to help us with that. Just give us one moment.
Like where we need to be and when.
You got it?
I can check with the to find out exactly what time you need to be there. I don't know that. I do know graduation, high school graduation is at two o'clock. I believe in the past, you've met at
One thirty.
One thirty in the principal's office.
Correct. And I will confirm that.
That would be great.
And then the graduation for ALC is a little bit earlier than that. So if you just give me a moment, I've got that in my email here. I'm going to email you the date for it.
The ALC graduation is Wednesday, June first at six P M.
At Northfield Middle School.
At the
Middle School. So that's a new spot.
Different location, yes. The ALC graduation continues to grow. So if you remember years ago, it was in the, in the gymnasium right here upstairs. Then we moved it to the high school auditorium, which really has not been sufficient of the last couple of years for the number of people who want to be there to celebrate. So we're moving it to the middle school auditorium this year.
Excellent. Okay. Well, any last comments or questions from the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by no. I mean, second by Corey. All those in favor, say aye. Meetings adjourned.